I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, January 8th, 2019. This is a Prescott City Council voting meeting. Mayor Protem, do you have any announcements for us today?
I do. I would like to share with the public a report that we just received from the Milken Institute. They rate large cities and small cities. And the city of Prescott was rated, the last time we were rated, we were number 33. And this year, we came up to number 26. And that's out of 201 small cities. So that's really quite an accomplishment. The only other cities in here that I could find, from Arizona, LeCavissou was 59, and Flagstaff was 71. So for us to be number 26 is wonderful. And I will tell you, I think with the things that are going to happen in 2019, we're going to see our city keep moving on up. So I just want to congratulate the city of Prescott and all the people that make it happen, which is all of you. So, thank you very much. Oh, and also, Steve, well, Steve has said, "We hit our 10,000 in Plainmouth." And so, the 10K for our airport, congratulations to Airport Manager Robin Sabata. And for everyone, again, that made that happen, which was all of you. I think Michael and Geraldine went to LA several times to have dinner. So, that's how we made this happen. So, 10,088, and that was even with one canceled flight. So, congratulations to the city of Prescott. We will, in fact, get our million dollars next year and then on. It makes it eligible for a lot of things for the airport. So, congratulations, Prescott.
Here, here, yeah.
Thank you for that, Mayor Protem. Today, we have an invocation by Pastor Jesse Burke of Sanctuary Covenant Church, and the pledge will be led by Councilman Sishka.
Father, we thank you so much for the blessings that you've given us, this town, this country, our freedom, and all the opportunities we have. Thank you for the leaders that are here in our community, both in front of me and behind me, and just the passion that they have for this place, for making it great and for making it safe. As they head into this next task, we just offer it up to you. We ask that you give them wisdom, that you give them clarity, that you give them strength to continue to lead this town and the place and in the way that you would want it to go. So we just pray your blessings over these proceedings and guide them and guide their minds and their wisdom as they make decisions for us. We ask these things in your son's name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Burke. Let's call roll, please.
Mayor Mangarelli.
Present.
Mayor Protem Orr.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Good.
Here.
Councilman Lamerson.
Here.
Councilwoman Scholl.
Yeah.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. Let's move on to presentations.
Presentation of a $1,000 award check to Vision of Vets and a $1,000 award check to Honor Flight Arizona from Tom Sheets with the Southwest Veterans Foundation and Chamber of Commerce.
Good afternoon. It's a pleasure and an honor to be here with the council of such a veteran-friendly organization in the country. We all know the background of the veteran percentages here, and we're proud to that. As was introduced, my name is Tom Sheets. I'm a retired Marine. I'm the Executive Director of the Southwest Veterans Foundation. We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. With me today is Ms. Patty Pyle, who's the Secretary of our Board of Directors and the Manager of Supplier Diversity at Salt River Project. You know, it's become very fashionable to thank a veteran. The sad reality is, is that many of our veterans and their families need a lot more than thanks. And the Southwest Veterans Foundation was conceived and is dedicated to help provide that much more. Last night, we had the opportunity to award two $1,000 Veteran College Scholarships. Were competitively selected, and they happened to both be students in Embry-Riddle. Today, we have an equal honor of providing $1,000 donations to two Prescott area organizations that are helping to provide that much more to our veterans and their families. So, could we start with Vision of Vets? And I know some of you are familiar with what Vision of Vets does. They provide profiles and courage using a unique technology that honors veterans and provides a product for their families to remember and honor and to share with the community. I think it's been particularly meaningful is that beyond that initial vision, they've also taken it into the local schools. And the young children have just taken to it dramatically. So, it is our honor to present to you and to support your work, a $1,000 donation. We, being a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, know that getting financial support is integrable to our mission, and we'd like to help you with your mission.
Thank you.
And since there's a better-than-even chance that the bank won't cash this one, and I know you won't be able to get it in the ATM machine, we'll give you one, a check that the bank will accept. And thank you again for all you do for veterans and their families.
Thank you very much. And we will, this will help continue our mission, and we truly appreciate it.
Great.
Thank you.
Our next presentation is to Honor Flight Arizona. And I know that probably all or almost all of you are familiar with the great work you do in honoring and remembering the service of World War II and Korean War veterans. This is particularly meaningful to me, as my 94-year-old father, a World War II veteran in the Army, you know, is struggling in his 10th decade. And I know the sacrifices that he and his family gave. And I know, although he lives in the East Coast, and I was able to get him to Washington, DC, a number of times to see and participate in the memorials and the things that the country has done to honor the veterans. Many of our veterans, particularly those on the West Coast, have not. What Honor Flight does is to provide that opportunity at no expense to our veterans to go back to Washington, DC, on a three-day journey of honor and remembrance. With us today is Susan Howell from Honor Flight Arizona. And on behalf of the Southwest Veterans Foundation, it is our honor to present to you a $1,000 check to help you continue to do much more for our veterans and their families.
Thank you.
And similarly, so that you've got a check that the bank will actually honor, here is a real check for $1,000.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do for our veterans.
Thank you.
And mayor and council and citizens, thank you very much for the opportunity. This is important to us, and we appreciate the opportunity to do it in such an official and public setting.
Tom, thanks for being here today. As you know, the city of Prescott, we are one of the most patriotic cities in the country, and we are very proud of that. And we also want to be a very, or the most friendly, veteran city in the country. And so, we're working very hard at that to make sure our veterans are taken care of. So, thank you so much for being here today and for these presentations.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to consent agenda. Anything that anyone would like to pull? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, move to approve Consent Agenda Items 7A through 7C.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Please vote. All right, let's move on to our next item, which is eight consent ordinance.
Item A is Adopt Ordinance Number 2019-1639, amending the Prescott City Code Title IV Business Regulations, Chapter 4-7 Spirituous Liquors, Section 4-7-3 Specialty Vet Liquor Licenses. Item B, Adopt Ordinance Number 2019-1645, adopting a property lease and sale agreement with Third Gen Enterprises LLC. Item C, Adopt Ordinance Number 2019-1640, authorizing the acceptance of a public drainage easement from Miller Corner LLC, and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said acceptance. Item D, Adopt Ordinance Number 2018-1641, authorizing the acceptance of a public drainage easement from Hepburn Enterprises LLC, and a public sidewalk easement from Unity Church of Prescott Incorporated, and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said acceptances.
Okay, entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 2019-1641.
Second.
Have a motion and second.
Mayor, you can actually vote on all four of them at once.
Yeah.
Okay, so I have moved to adopt all of the consent ordinance.
Second.
Motion and second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, thanks for that efficiency. Let's move on to item nine, Liquor License Agenda.
Public hearing and consideration for a new Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License from Douglas Edwin Libby, applicant for Touchmark at the Ranch located at 3180 Touchmark Boulevard. The application has been determined to be in compliance with city requirements. The application has been paid, and the sign has been posted at the site for 20 days. No public comment has been received, and Mr. Libby is here to give an overview of his restaurant.
Okay, Mr. Libby? Yeah.
I'm Douglas Libby. I'm the Executive Director at Touchmark at the Ranch. And if many of you might be familiar, we're located on 45 acres, just west of Yavapai Hills, above Walmart, and In-N-Out Burger, if those are your fans. This particular liquor license is for our new Grand Lodge. And the Grand Lodge has a public restaurant called Charlie's. And Charlie's is also adjacent to some of our meeting space, which is the Amingas Mountain Forum, the Grand Canyon Room, and then our outdoor patio, which consists of about 8,000 square feet. The Series 12 liquor license would enable us to be able to sell alcohol to the public as well as residents at Touchmark. Currently, we do host various types of events for the residents and for the public. We're not able to sell the alcohol. And so, by having the Series 12, it gives us the control to do so, and the auspices to train our staff for proper alcohol handling.
That's great. Well, we appreciate what you do in the city. The Finn is an awesome restaurant, so we look forward to what you have to offer with this new one, and want to thank you for investing in our city and for everything that you do here in our community. So, thank you so much.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Just out of curiosity, knowing it's one site on, what, 45 acres, I would ask why we, they would have to have two liquor licenses on the same property? It just seemed to me that it's a huge expense that they have to pay twice if it's all located on one property.
Well, I can address that, Mayor. It's because liquor laws, you have to define the premises. And so, these are two separate buildings. So, you'd have, so if you had one license, it would include, for instance, the parking lot. And in other words, it would have to be the whole, the whole complex. And a Series 12 liquor license is essentially issued by the state at relatively nominal cost. So, two separate liquor licenses just kind of makes sense, is my guess, from a legal and practical standpoint.
Well, thank you for bringing your enterprise here, and maybe if you built a breezeway between one building and the other.
Take that into consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Libby. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Leonard?
Can I ask a question? So, Mr. Libby, is your restaurant open?
It is.
Charlie's?
Oh, it is?
Yeah, it's open. It's 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday.
All right.
I'm sorry, 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and then 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM on Saturdays and Sundays.
Okay. Very good.
And what kind of food does it serve?
It's basically deli sandwiches, soups, sodas right now, various beverages. There's a small seating area where it has some individual tables and chairs, and it's just a nice casual place to dine.
Perfect. Thanks so much, Mr. Libby. Appreciate it. Entertain a motion?
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Mayor, I move to approve Recommendation for Liquor License Application Number 39038 for a new Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for Touchmark at the Ranch, location 3180 Touchmark Boulevard.
Second.
Motion and second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, let's move on to item 10A, please.
Appointments of Sierra Christensen, Tessa Dunn, Lucas Foray, Jennifer Knight, Sheridan Mangarelli, Ridley Mortenson, and Nicholas Romero to the Youth Advisory Board.
Mayor Protem is going to lead out here.
Well, this is something we've been waiting for and very excited about. Every year, the city goes down to the League of Cities and Towns. And so often, we're down there and we see other cities, they have youth councils or advisory boards, and Prescott did not have one. So, this year, Mayor Mangarelli said, "Why aren't we doing this?" And we said, "We don't know. Let's do it." And he said, "Let's do it." So, here we are. We have formed a youth advisory board, and I'm so happy to ask Tyler up, because Tyler, as usual, we come up with these ideas, and Tyler implements them. So, Tyler, just, if you could describe the process to folks.
Absolutely. I guess I'll stand kind of in the middle. As you remember, in October, the council approved the youth advisory board, and we set up applications to end on November 30th. We had 36 applicants and only seven seats. And I read through each application myself, as well as the council subcommittee on appointments, and each one was very, very qualified, and we were very excited to get that many. So, we have a great group of youth who are going to be on this board. There was a lot of discussion and back and forth, I remember, in that committee meeting to discuss who should be on. And we had applicants from all the high schools and even a homeschool. So, that was, that was really neat. And the next meeting, the first meeting, in fact, will be next Tuesday at 4:00 PM, right here in the council chambers.
Wonderful. Thank you, Tyler.
Thank you.
So, we would like to introduce to you our youth advisory board. So, when I call your name, if you will, please come up. And then, at the microphone, will you tell us the name of your school or where you go to school? And then also, what year you are in school? And then, please remain standing, and then we will do the oath of office for our youth advisory board. And congratulations to you all. So, let's begin. I do not see Sierra Christensen. Is she here? Okay. We're going to go alphabetical order, so we'll have to give the oath to Sierra later. So, if we could please have, next is Tessa Dunn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I go to Tri-City Prep, and I'm in 10th grade. And I wanted to be on the board because I think it's a great opportunity to help serve the community that I grew up in and just become more involved in all of the things that a lot of people don't get to be involved in.
Thank you, Tessa. And if you'd like to stay up here with us? If you did, that'd be great. Thank you. Our next student is Lucas Foray. Lucas. Congratulations.
My name is Lucas Foray, and I'm in 11th grade at Prescott High School. And I want to be on the youth advisory board, just because ever since I was a young boy, I'd wanted to change the world in some way. And I decided to do that through politics. And so, this was the closest thing that I could get.
And it was yesterday, the mayor and I were down at the inauguration in Phoenix. And when I was there, listening to these other folks take the oath of office, you never know what seed we're going to plant today with these young folks that are willing to serve our city. Our next is Jennifer Knight.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. So, I am Jennifer Knight. I am homeschooled, actually, and I am in 11th grade. The reason I wanted to be on the city youth council was because I wanted to serve the community I've grown up in. Thank you.
Thank you. Very nice. Our next student is Sheridan Mangarelli.
Hi, I'm Sheridan Mangarelli. I'm at Prescott High School, and I'm a junior, going to be a senior. And I was raised and I've been in Prescott my whole life, and I wanted to see a really good representation of people in high school, because we do a really good job of representing people that are retired. This is a retirement town, and I really wanted to make sure that people my age are also getting that, so.
Nicholas, congratulations.
I'm in 9th grade. I go to Bassett Prescott. And the reason I wanted to be on the youth advisory board is I wanted to get a good idea of how politics work, and this was a great opportunity to do so.
Thank you. And our next student is, I'm sorry, lost my spot again, is Nicholas Romero. Nicholas, congratulations.
My name's Nicholas Romero. I go to Prescott High School. I am a junior, 11th grade. And I thought this was going to be a really good opportunity for me to try and perfect the town. And I thought it was a really good opportunity for me as well to see the political side of things in this town.
Well, to each and every one of you, I want to thank you for applying. Councilman Lamerson and Councilman Blair and I serve on the appointment committee. I will tell you, your applications were excellent, and I wish you, as you go forward, this is going to be something great for you to do and to put on your resumes as you move forward. So, congratulations, and thank you for being willing to serve. So, now, we'll do the oath of office.
What we'll do real quick is a motion to make sure that these guys get approved, and then we'll...
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah.
I recommend the appointment of Sierra Christensen, Tessa Dunn, Lucas Foray, Jennifer Knight, Sheridan Mangarelli, Ridley Mortenson, and Nicholas Romero. Romero, sorry about that, Nick. To the youth advisory board for the term beginning January 8th, 2019, and ending June 30th, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
You guys made it. That's good.
All right, yeah.
All right. We'd like you to hold your right hand up, and please repeat after me. I?
Aye.
State your name.
Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Arizona.
Of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And defend them.
And defend them.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of youth advisory.
Of youth advisory.
Word member.
Word member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So, I do affirm.
So, I do affirm.
Yeah, congratulations.
Way to go, you guys.
Did they just join the army?
John, they don't know it yet, so.
There you go, Nico.
Congratulations, you guys. Thank you so much. All right, let's move on to item 10B, please.
Award of City Contract to Earth Resources Corporation for the Crushing of Concrete Inert Waste Mix and Asphalt Millings.
It's a long way down. So, this item is for approval of the contract, as stated, to Earth Resources for processing the city's stockpile of concrete inert waste and asphalt millings at the transfer station. Through its daily operations, these stockpiles are generated and have accumulated to an amount which now requires processing. This contract will facilitate this work and result in the material being processed into a usable product for the city. These stockpiles are generated in one of two ways. First, the Solid Waste Division diverts dedicated loads of concrete inert mix material at a discounted gate rate for our customers to encourage them to bring the materials in separately from regular trash and brush. We approximate there is 20,000 tons of this material now stockpiled on SunDog. The Street Maintenance Division receives the asphalt millings from capital improvement projects, as well as generates its own asphalt rubble from our routine maintenance and special projects that we do. We estimate that we have 18,000 tons of this asphalt debris. So, the finished crushed product will be stockpiled onsite to be used by Public Works in upcoming capital and maintenance projects and for various uses that we have. Work hours for this project are planned to be 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, onsite at the transfer station. The contract is for an initial two-year term with options to extend for one-year periods up to three additional years, so it could be up to five years. The city had four companies attend the pre-bid with two submitting bids, and ERC was the low bidder. And we reviewed that bid and judged it to be satisfactory. The city budgeted the project in fiscal year 19, and in the streets and solid waste funds, this is co-funded, and staff is recommending approval of the contract, number 2019-164, to ERC in an amount not to exceed $233,520. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Ian. Questions, comments from the council?
Mayor, I just have one. Ian, what happens to the product after it's crushed? Where does it be, where is it stored, and who utilizes it?
Yeah, so, so it's going to be processed into a three-quarter minus material that would be good for roadway fill, you know, fill material in general on construction projects. It will be stored onsite, so we're doing, solid waste is doing some, and streets are doing some work to move things around so that the equipment can be moved in to crush it all and then keep it onsite. So, it will be, it will remain there. It will be moved into facilities that we can access easier. And then, we plan on using that for our own projects, utilities, I would think would have a lot of use for that. We may explore options to offer it to some of our customers if we have excess that we don't need. And so, that's basically, it's a usable product and something that we really, you know, have, it has great value. So, we need to put it into that material so we can use it.
Excellent. Thank you. Anything else?
I had a quick question, Mayor. Thank you. Do you anticipate collecting this volume of material on an annual basis?
So, this is, this is a stockpile for several years' worth. This wasn't done in one year. This is many years' worth of product. So, we don't anticipate bringing this much product. And again, we've just been building it up through the years, and now, we're getting to the point, if you've been out there, it's that large mound that's in the middle, and we really need the room. So, we will keep our, once we, you know, get this processed and moved, we don't anticipate having such a large area there, need for that, as long as we keep up with it. And that's what this contract allows us to do.
So, the contract is financially binding for the first two years, and then a renewal. But if we're not processing that much material on an annual basis, how much will the renewal cost be?
Yeah, so, yeah, so we're 233,000 approximately right now for 38,000 tons. We're probably looking at somewhere in the range of 20% of that, 25% of that, on an annual cost basis. And obviously, that could vary depending on how much we get or don't get. And then, obviously, we'll have to come back to get the funding approvals for that as part of the budget process.
So, the renewal will be not to exceed amount?
Yeah, and this, initial contract is as well. These are not guaranteed quantities. These are approximations of what's out there and also what will be processed. We only pay, we pay per ton for both types of material, so we only pay what we process. And that can be done over the two years or not the entire amount, so, so not to exceed.
Thank you, Ian. Okay, if no other comments, thank you, Ian. We'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to award City Contract Number 2019-164 to Earth Resources Corporation.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Okay, let's move on to item 10C, please.
Award of City Contract with Third Gen Enterprises LLC for Sewer Improvement Construction Cost Reimbursement. An Award of City Contract to Lion Engineering for Post-Design Services for the Airport Trunk Main 2A Sewer Improvements.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Eric Bay with Public Works. This next item is for the relocation and upsizing of a portion of the airport trunk main. This portion is located generally between Centerforce Avenue and the airport water reclamation facility. And in general, it's located on the third-gen development property. And here is a location map. So, one thing you may notice, and the main reason that this project has a couple numbers and letters... and letters on the end of it, Phase 2A, is that's an example of another situation where city staff has accelerated a portion of a capital improvement project because of impending development to create that win-win situation that we're always looking for with infrastructure improvements. And one of those advantages in the win-win is there is now a right-of-way on this parcel, so we can move our alignment into the right-of-way, much better than having it in the back of, you know, a lot in an easement where, you know, we have to fight to keep our access right. It's now in the right-of-way where we have easy access for operation and maintenance. Additionally, it's a win for the development because there are a whole number of lots that no longer have a very wide encumbrance, a sewer trunk main easement on them. There's another win for the city because with this relocated alignment, the overall installation is up to 10 feet less of cover in some places, so that's an ease of operation and maintenance for us. And then, of course, another win for the developer is that after they complete their new subdivision, their commercial subdivision, with curb and gutter and pavement, we don't have to go back in there a year, a year and a half, two years later, cut it and patch it, and this, of course, is a real savings to the city for not having to do surface improvements later on with the project in the future. So personally, I'm a big fan of this project for three reasons. The first of which is it's part of our centralization program, so it's another step towards centralizing and decommissioning the SunDog wastewater treatment plant, getting all of our wastewater flows down to the airport plant. The second reason is that this is going to be the largest diameter sewer main that Prescott has ever installed, so I'm very excited to be a part of the project. The third reason, and probably the most important reason, is the pipe we're putting in is centrifugally cast, fiber reinforced polymer mortar pipe. The manholes we're putting in are solid cast polymer manholes. The rim and covers that we're putting in are composite covers. So basically, we've created a high-volume, fully corrosion-resistant sewer system solution in this area that will well outlast all of my guys, and field data suggests that this will be serving the residents of Prescott well over 100 years. So, city staff has thoroughly evaluated the construction cost reimbursement, this, of course, being previously approved in the DA with the, the third gen development. We had several negotiation meetings, and we're comfortable with the, the construction cost reimbursement, we're recommending award it this time. Also, this council memo includes a much smaller post-construction design services contract with Lion Engineer, the designer of the project for construction administration, as-built survey, record drawing, preparation, engineer certificate of completion, and things like that, we're also recommending award of that contract at this time as well. I think that's about it, so with that, do I have any questions about this project?
This is like Christmas all over again for you, is that right?
It really is.
I think you're the most passionate I've ever seen anyone about sewer pipe, that's good, you have the right job. Any questions or comments from the council?
I just want to know, did you have Tonka trucks when you were a kid?
And I plead fifth.
Fleet.
We'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve City Contract number 2019-158 and 2019-159.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you, Eric. And let's go on to item D.
Approval of City Contract with Intelis Incorporated for Design and Other Engineering Services for the Loma, Rica, and Skyline Lift Stations Abandonment Project.
All right, Eric Bay again. This next item is just for the design phase of some new gravity sewer that could potentially eliminate an additional two lift stations from the city of Prescott wastewater collection system. These two lift stations would be our Loma Rica Lift Station and our Skyline Lift Station. The Loma Rica Lift Station is very aged, could use quite a bit of rehabilitation, and candidly, out of all of our lift stations, the location, the layout of it is fairly hazardous to our operators, so it's one that we, we're very careful with maintaining, would rather do without. The Skyline Lift Station is not as aged, but still requires that regular operation and maintenance that we perform with the rest of the lift stations. In lieu of spending those rehabilitation dollars on the lift stations, Wastewater Collections has developed a potential concept where we could install some gravity sewer and serve those collection areas by gravity instead of by pump. I do say potential because the first step in the design, the design concept, is to run a feasibility analysis to see if we can truly feed these by gravity. Overall, this will be the third lift station abandonment project that the city has undertaken in recent years since I've been here. The first two were the Copper Vista Lift Station Abandonment Project, and the Mingus and the Douglas Lift Station Abandonments Project. Those are now both completes, they're both operating, and the city is now reaping the benefits from those projects, so we're hoping that this third recent lift station abandonment project will be as wildly successful as the previous two. City staff has reviewed the consultant's scope and fee, we're familiar with the consultant and the work they did, they, they actually designed the last, the last lift station abandonment project, and we were very happy with the results that we received from them. Funding is available in the wastewater fund, and we are recommending award at this time. With that, I'll answer any questions about the project.
Thank you. Yeah, this is very interesting, when I was looking at the map, just with the Haciapa Capital Canyon Development made this possible, right, by having that development, you know, within the crow's fly there to get this done, so that's, that's awesome. Any questions, comments?
I had one question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Do you have concerns whether gravity is going to work in this particular area? Because I know that Loma Rica area up there is a real challenge.
The answer to that is yes and no. For the Skyline Lift Station, we have a very clear line of sight downhill corridor that we can use to connect that service area via gravity. The Loma Rica Lift Station does traverse some pretty rough terrain, and there's a lot of rivulets, canyons, terrain concerns that we are going to fully evaluate before we put a shovel to the ground, so kind of a mixed answer for you there.
Will you be able to fully determine its functionability prior to a big investment of, of dollars in, into this?
Absolutely. Even down to the design contract, the, the very first task is the feasibility study, so the consultant will not even spend money taking it to 30, 60, or 90 or final design without a reassurance of feasibility right off the bat.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve City Contract number 2019-162.
Second. Motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, thank you, Eric. Let's move on to item 10E, please.
Adoption of Resolution Number 2019-1670 for the Stormland Company LLC amended and restated development agreement.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Gwen Rowich with Public Works. The item before you is for the amendment and restated development agreement for Storm Ranch subdivision. It's a 227-lot subdivision that's located east of Prescott Lakes Parkway, I'm sorry. Yes. Sorry, east of Prescott Lakes Parkway and north of SunDog Connector Road, or what would futurably be known as the SunDog Connector Road. I'm just going to give you a little bit of history because this project has a longstanding history with the city. In 2007, the city entered into a development agreement for the development of the 227 lots, but in 2008, it was reassigned to another owner. It sat for a while, and in 2017, came back into the city because the 10-year sunset on it was coming up for expiration. At that time, the city issued a letter of substantial conformance on the layout of the lots, and extended the terms of the agreement for one year for water. In 2018, the project was reassigned again to SLF 3 AZ Storm Ranch LLC, and was extended for another year. It's important to note all of that because in the amended development agreement, we're referring to all of those things as the first Storm Ranch Development Agreement, and the agreement in front of you today will supersede all of those prior agreements. It's somewhat cumbersome and laborious for the staff and the developer to figure out what he's supposed to do when we're reading five or six different agreements, so we made an attempt with this agreement to consolidate those things and make it as succinct as possible. The agreement essentially provides for the development, the construction of Storm Ranch Parkway, which includes the renaming of the road SunDog Connector to Storm Ranch Parkway for an interim period, or until such time as SunDog Connector potentially would connect to Prescott Valley. In addition to that, it includes provisions for the construction of SunDog Ranch Road, including an emergency access road, which is actually noted right here, this is SunDog Ranch Road, and right about here is where the transfer station is located, so the road will extend further and then come up the side of the hill as an emergency access only into the development. In addition to that, the agreement provides for the potential for upsizing or reimbursing of water and wastewater mains, as well as a wastewater lift station if they are needed. The Mystic Ridge Parkway, which is located here, will actually end just beyond the road that's known as, and I apologize, Shady Gate Drive. If development were to occur in the future to the east of here, then future development would be required to install any roadway improvements in this location. As part of this agreement, the developer will be donating the land to the city for the future extension of Mystic Ridge Parkway. The agreement also provides for 80 acre feet of potable water, and I'd like it noted in the record, a typo in the council memo that says eight, it's actually 80 acre feet of potable water. And finally, approval of the agreement, the owner has requested to post financial assurances for the project within 30 days of the recording of the final plat, which is contrary to the Land Development Code unless it is approved by council. I'm here to answer any questions, Mr. Charlie Arnold, representative for the project, is also here this afternoon.
Thank you, Gwen. Questions, comments from the council?
Mayor, I had a question. 80 acre feet for 227 lots? Even at .25 acre feet per lot, that would only be 57 acre feet that would be needed for this number of units. Why are we allocating so many acre feet?
80 acre feet was part of the original development agreement, we did not renegotiate the potable water, but we certainly can do that.
Is this going to be a water-smart community?
Mayor, Council, Councilman Good, Charlie Arnold on behalf of Stormlanco. Just a little bit more history, the project actually received its final plat approval by the city council last year. As part of that, it also received its water vesting, as evidenced by a letter issued by the city, so the water quantity has been assigned. We are open to working with the Water Resources Department to look at if the ultimate allocation can be reduced, but the project's going to be built in conformance with the building standards in the city, so it's not going to have a water-smart designation, it's going to meet the city's requirements for water use at a residential property.
Well, it seems to me like we're overallocating a precious commodity here, and we should be able to fulfill your needs for development and be able to return some of that allocated water back to our portfolio.
Absolutely, and again, with it being vested in the project, I don't know what the process that staff would go through for that, but we are more than open to that discussion as we move into the development phase of the project.
Maybe I can address a little bit, kind of overall, because another good example would be Prescott Lakes, and we, we allocated probably enough water for another, I think, 700 homes or something that essentially it's effectively built out. That, that can all be essentially put back into the city's portfolio, so, you know, and we've talked about sort of changing procedures possibly in the future where we don't necessarily allocate a specific number, we kind of know a number by, based on a general, because right now, when we say .25 or .20, you know, acre feet per lot, it's really a generalization, and with this new, this new GIS kind of program we've talked about before, it'll tell us exactly how much water this subdivision, at build-out, exactly how much water it's using, and that's the water it gets, so we'll, we'll have a, a much more sort of data-driven, scientific approach. I think, I think the purpose of the water service agreement is to give, give this project its required 100-year water supply for purposes of subdivision report, but certainly, once we determine its, its use, or, or we could, you know, or once we determine its projected use, we could certainly redo the water service agreement to the extent that we're, we're giving assurance that there, there's sufficient water for each home, but the rest of that just gets put back in the portfolio.
Could some of this be addressed, John, with the new, a new water policy?
Right, and that's the point. Right now, we're in this old, or this current policy, sort of interim, and within the next six, five, six months, we're going to come out with a new policy, and so that, that will be part of what gets addressed, so the development community is assured its water supply, the city knows almost to a house what, what's being used, certainly as to a development, what's being used, and that's the water that's assigned to it, and it may fluctuate every year, give or take, but, so we'll be able to calculate really down to small areas, how much water this actually, this will actually use.
I know, this particular development goes back 10 years, so allocation 10 years ago...
It's over-allocated.
Yeah, right.
It's clearly over-allocated, because remember, at that time, it was .25 or more, or .35.
.35.
And now we're, we're, because we have the, the science, the technology to determine, it's, it's half that, at, at, at worst, per household, because remember, the .35 assumed basically commercial development, right? So, so, you know, in reality, this is probably going to use 40 acre feet, or, or 30 acre, I mean...
.2 would be 45, yeah.
Yeah, so, we'll, we'll be able to get to that, once we get the new policy in place, we'll go back and basically retool the, the water service agreement, and, and either provide a specific number or just an assurance that you get the water you need for each house.
And Mr. Arnold, you'll cooperate with that?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Good.
Mayor, I'd just like to say one more thing, I think what Councilman Good was getting to was that if we over-allocated the water, then we would be shutting someone else out from coming into the market because of that water being spoken for, so, under the new water policy, that's going to be addressed, right? Okay.
Good, good points. Any other questions, comments?
Mayor, I do have one speaker card.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Steve Huddleston.
Thank, thank you, Mayor, Council. As you know, I'm Steve Huddleston, my wife is Ellie Huddleston, she's originally a Storm Ranch family, from here for a long time. We're sitting right in the middle of the development, and we would like to address the issues regarding the Stormlanc developers' request for changes to their development plan. We have some concerns and believe a conclusive vote to be premature. As a homeowner of two properties in the direct middle of this development, we are not advised of any changes in this development plan. We only found out about it in yesterday's newspaper regarding the agenda. We've had not time to review the changes, to see how it could affect our home, our land, our agricultural ranching business, and our sons' homes that are also on the property. We, we need to see us out of the previous plans and proposed new plans to compare the changes that may affect us. It's 33 pages long. Our family especially needs to review how we'll access our home, and how our sons will access their homes and property. We need to make sure we have legal access in the form of property, property record, recorded easements to our properties, so in the future, if we decide to sell, that we can sell legally if we want to. We also want to know if the state land department has been made aware of the changes requested, and how it may impact the future worth of their state land holdings. State land should provide written approval before the action is voted on by council. Also, do the developers have approval access for the Department of Energy and Arizona Public Service as their lines cross the property and traverses through one of ours, property? Because they do work on them quite often. Because they do work on them quite often. And hopefully, we can sit down to communicate with the developers to coordinate on what works best for us, as well as for them. We hope the city can review these changes to see how the infrastructure changes will affect their future pocketbooks. Due to the lack of clarity and transparency in these very important issues, we respectfully request a continuance to resolve these issues before the council chooses to vote. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Huddleston. Thank you for being here today, and thank you for your comments. Mr. Arnold, would you be able to address some of the access easement issues?
Certainly, Mayor, and thank you for the opportunity. And first and foremost, I've known the Huddleston family, or at least one of the sons, for a long time, and have an immense amount of respect for them. When this property was sold and they kept the homestead, there was a sales agreement that spelled out certain obligations that the developer would have. In addition to that, Arizona state law is very specific about access. What we're doing today is a development agreement modification that is focused on dealing with the utilities, how the utilities are being paid for, what size the utilities are going to be, and what obligations the city and the developer have. As far as the development plan, the final plat, that has already been through the public process and approved. In regards to the access to their two properties, if you don't mind, I'm going to step over here to the Elmo so I can point at a few things. Right here is the main homestead property, and to the north of it is the proposed access, legal access, that will connect into a city street right here. Their current access point is from the north, and so, we are matching the current location in which they are entering and exiting their property. If you've been to the outlook over there on 89 and looking towards the property, you'll note their son's building a home on their property here on the exception parcel. It's a little difficult to see, but right where the pin is extended, as per the original plat that was provided and approved, there is an access location here. We have to provide stub outs for the utilities to make those available to them, and, and that's being done. In regards to communication, in the past, we have communicated regularly with the Huddelstons. Sometimes we find agreement on things, and other times we don't. When we've approached about questions, sometimes we're able to come to a conclusion, and sometimes we are not. It's the tug-of-war that always is going to occur within a project. Today, though, the focal point here is that we are eliminating a lift station that the city would otherwise have to maintain into the future by putting in one instead of two lift stations. We are eliminating what has been a budgeted, ongoing commitment from the city to fund 50% of a road that would be four-lane divided, going from Prescott Lakes Parkway all the way to the edge of the property here. And if you look in the, in every budget book for the last 10 years, there's a carry forward in the budget of nearly $6 million for the city's portion. We are right-sizing the road to service 227 units, and we are absorbing the cost of that road. The last six months, we have spent diligently working with city staff, and I have to tell you, working with the leadership in public works and the city manager's office and city attorney's office has been spectacular. It's been complicated, because as Gwen mentioned, there are several agreements that we've tried to bring together into one. But, at the end of the day, we are creating a situation where the city's not maintaining four lanes of public roadway to 227 houses, and we're also going to be cleaning up some utility problems in Sundog Ranch Road. And as part of this, there will be a new paved entrance to the police and fire training facilities, which currently, you note, will, goes to a dirt road through a manual gate at the transfer station. So, there's some really significant items that are taking place here that will benefit not just us, but other portions of the city and future areas within the city limits as part of this development agreement.
I appreciate that, Mr. Arnold. So, essentially, this action today doesn't in material affect agreements that were made with the Huddelstons previously?
We are not asking for any modification to the plat as it stands in its substantial conformance.
Other questions, comments from the council?
Well, I do have a question regarding Mr. Arnold's response. I'm concerned that the Huddelstons have sufficient amount of time to absorb this and, and agree that it's not a significant impact on their, on their homestead. So, Mr. Huddleston, what's your response to Mr. Arnold's comments?
Okay, thank you again. I'm going to step over here also and show you where I feel one point does real impact on us. Okay, let's see, how does it? Up here, right on, let me show the pin here. Where they have us connecting into is a point that is a real steep area right there. It's going to take quite a bit of roadwork to go on up here. We've already, there is already a road established about halfway in between here that goes up to the power lines, and that's where I have a real problem with, with the entrance for that. You know, it'd make it a lot easier if it was here, or, you know, we could, this is going to be real tough. We'd have to build quite a road in here to even access it. So, that's what my concern is on.
Steve, I have a question for you. Was this dealt with in the previous, or in the development agreement as it stands right now?
Not to my knowledge. I'd have to go back through and take a look at it. I don't think that was even brought up at that time.
Okay, well.
We have on that little strip right there, 6.8 acres that go along that border, about 1,400 feet.
Well, I guess my concern is, is that the development agreement as it stands has already been approved, right?
It's been approved, as Gwen was saying, and amended, and amended, and amended. So, there's, I think, how many different, original and five amendments? And so, one of the reasons this was done, and Mr. Arnold kind of referred to it, one of the reasons this was done was the original development agreement and its amendments had a 50/50 partnership on this four-lane road, and that's sort of instigated the conversation. If we get rid of the, the four-lane road, make it a two-lane road, we could reduce the cost to city by about $4 to $6 million. And then it's sort of, then we started talking about consolidating it into one agreement and sort of, and not allocating, assigning sort of what needs to be done for this project, winnowing it down, because it didn't need, I think the project was bigger and it was, had more homes originally?
The 227 was the first approved. However, the middle owner attempted, they came to the city numerous times trying to triple the density.
Okay, so, but, so the utilities and things were sort of oversized, I think, for this particular project. I think if you look at, I think it's Mystic Ridge, where the highlighted line stops at what looks sort of like a little roundabout, and then there's a line that goes from left to right to essentially the state trust land, which runs north-south, that, the developer's going to be, yeah, there. The developer's going to be obligated to grade that out, to indicate to the homes to the, above it on the map, whatever, that is north, I guess, of it, that there's going, at some point, there may be a road there. But, that road would be built whenever state trust land ever gets sold and developed. So, the developer's going to have to grade out that road across, but not, but that's the extent that I think the improvements to it. So, it's clearly visible to anybody buying a house or buying a lot along that, above that road, that there's some, a road there in the future. And perhaps that's an opportunity for access for Mr. Huddleston off, off of that graded dirt road, essentially is what it would be. I don't know if...
And a little bit more history, originally, the road in the preliminary plat was right along the property line to the Huddleston parcel there. However, when our engineers went in to look at how to build the road to the city standards, it was going to require us to get a slope easement, which we approached the Huddelstons at the time about, doing a land swap to be able to accommodate that portion of the road, which would have improved overall access, and it would have expanded the, the main homestead parcel. And at that time, through that process, we received a letter from their attorney asking us to cease and desist communicating with them about that option. We have ensured pursuant to Arizona state law and the intent of the original preliminary plat, as well as the final plat, that we have legal and physical access available to both properties and the utilities that need to go along with that. We are more than happy to sit down and work through any issue as it relates to access to the northern parcel, because the agreement states, we have to provide access, and it's our intent to ensure that the access not only works for the Huddelstons, but it also works for the development.
So, Charlie, is what we're dealing with today, this?
No. This development agreement, this restating of the development agreement has nothing to do with this issue. The plat has been approved. We are clearing up and cleaning up the five agreements that have to do with what size road is being built, what size utilities are being built, who's paying for it, what's the timeframe for that to occur. Those are the items that are being addressed in this agreement. Has nothing to do with density, or swaps, or anything else of that nature. It is purely focused on the utilities and who the responsibility for that payment lies in.
Well, that's what I thought. But, so, so how can we have a solution to this situation that will work for everybody and, and be timely with, with, you know, your project going forward?
So, it is our request that you approve the restated development agreement as it sits today, because we have to move forward on developing the public infrastructure. The lift station that I mentioned, the single lift station, that's going to take us months to not only design, but to get everything in order so that when we start construction, it will actually be ready to have, receive sewage when the project goes online. As far as the concern about the access, again, we are more than happy to sit down and communicate. Don Allison from our team has been the point of contact with the Huddelstons for numerous different things throughout the time that we have had the property in escrow and have owned it. And our door continues to be open. Again, what we're dealing with today does nothing about changing lots, access points, anything of that nature.
Let me just add, the, the original five agreements had a whole list of developer obligations, many, many of those. And there's, I know we did a, a, a letter that many, many of those obligations have been completed by the developer. So, what this does is it whittles down what's left to be done. And if you look at the agreement, Storm Ranch Parkway, that's the essentially four lanes to two roundabout. That's, that's one of the primary public works issues. Sundog Ranch Road, about, you know, who installs the sewer, the water? Can we re-sleeve the water into a sewer line? Who repaves the road? Who creates the extension? Let me scroll down to the next item. It talks about reimbursements of utility improvements, and then Mystic, there's been some name changes, which, which also helped, I think, alleviate some of the confusion. Sundog Ranch Road, and then the Mystic Parkway, part of that agreement was that it could end where the highlighting ends and not all the way to the state trust land. So, so I agree with Mr. Arnold that, that this really doesn't, it reiterates the water, sewer service issue. I'm just kind of scrolling through. So, what this is, is just, it, it simplifies a set of five, an agreement with four amendments that, that had some conflicts to them, to be honest with you, that, that were done over the years, and you'd read one, and then you'd read the old one, and it wasn't real clear about what was the intent of the agreement and who had to do what. So, we tried to clean that up with this agreement, but it doesn't change the subdivision plat at all.
So, if we approve today, does that preclude Mr. Huddleston from being satisfied?
You'd have to ask him.
Well, but I think your point is, Councilman, that we can only deal with what's in front of us, which doesn't have anything to do with access. I, I empathize and understand Mr. Huddleston's point, but this agreement doesn't affect that.
It, it doesn't change it. It, it, if, if it's, if it's, the access is done by way of the subdivision plat, and then the old, or the prior purchase agreements that have a, that survive the closing and they obligate the owner, developer of this land to provide both utility and vehicle or, or access to the properties, those remain in effect whether or not you approve this agreement or not. This agreement, but, but by approving this agreement, it doesn't change that at all. It doesn't change it. It's not an amendment to the plat. It doesn't change any private agreements that existed or that exist now. This is just consolidating five really convoluted agreements, or an agreement in four amendments that really convolute and complicate the issue. A number of the obligations in those, in that agreement and four amendments have already been completed by the developer. So, this, this gets rid of those and says, this is what's left to do to complete this project.
And for the record, I'm reassured that Mr. Arnold will reach out and has good intent to make sure the Huddelstons are taken care of. Mayor Protem?
Well, that's kind of what I wanted to say, mayors. So, Mr. Arnold, it seems like there's some communication things that need to be fixed, and we, we know that you will take care of that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and Mr. Huddleston, appreciate you coming forward.
And we can accept that also.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huddleston. Okay, with that, we'll entertain a motion. We're on 10 E for your reference.
Mayor, I move to adopt resolution number 2019-1670.
Motion second, please vote.
Pass the 7-0.
Item 10 F, please.
Approval of three items relating to the runway 3R 21L rehabilitation and hotspot number two mitigation project. Number one is a change order request. Number two is approve amendment A1, and number three is an acceptance of Arizona Department of Transportation grant.
And just before you go forward, we will need three motions, three separate votes, because there are three separate issues or items.
Fair enough. Congratulations, Dr. Sabata, on 10,000, what was the number?
10,111.
Oh, wow, even more. Wow. Where'd you find those?
That'll be easy to remember.
Well, that really is an amazing number, and, you know, there are so many folks that help make that happen. It's the airline employees, the city employees, many of them, our consulting team, Dibble is here as well, and then frankly, the air traffic control folks and the TSA folks who are currently still continuing to work despite the fact that they're not getting compensated at this time. So, we have to thank them all for their dedication to great air service in Prescott. This is really exciting. We're just closing up the final grant. This is sort of the cleanup at the end of the grant, and what this is, is three different items that are all associated with this grant. This was the $6 million, actually, you can see up here, the $6.1 million original total. That's the first column, grant that was in. And when the FAA came through, it did, did omit one item due to a mathematical error, so that's why there's a zero up there in the grant match column. Just to refresh, the FAA pays for 95% of eligible costs. The Department of Transportation here in the state, Arizona Department of Transportation, pays for 2.5%, and the city share is 2.5%. So, what happened on this is that there was a change order that's required. It was required because of three different items. One is there was an increase in construction cost. What we ran into in this project, that there were some soil conditions, and there were some changes in layers of pavement that pretty much took us down to dirt in some areas. So, there was additional materials and labor costs associated with that. The second reason for the change order had to do with the fact that there was that omission up there. It was a mathematical error, and we brought it to the attention of the FAA, and they corrected it. And they said, yes, we'll restore that amount in the grant. And the third was due to, there was a local reduction in the, in the city of Prescott reimbursable amount. Both the construction administration and the city of Prescott reimbursable amount was reduced because Fan was an amazingly efficient contractor and completed this project almost a month ahead of schedule. So, because of that, there were reduction in fees associated. So, as I noted, the first item that you would be approving is a change order to reflect those amounts. The second item that you will be approving is an amendment to the city contract to be paid to Fan Construction for $183,744, and that is for the extra costs associated with the unforeseen conditions. And the third item is to accept the ADOT grant for $152,500. So, this is the end of this grant, and we wanted to note that it was really fortunate that we had this runway rehabilitation job, and we actually had grooving on this. I don't know if you all know, but our completion rate last year on the carrier was 99, 99.6% completion rate on flights. There were only two flights canceled since they started service, and both of them occurred during the snow event on the 31st of the month, on December 31st. So, there was one inbound cancellation and one outbound cancellation. Other than that, they made every other flight without cancellation. One of the reasons they were able to actually take off and land on that day for the other two flights is because we had really great grooving on the runway, and the friction was exceptional. So, we had great stopping. So, really, this was, this was a savior of a project for us to be able to use in inclement weather conditions, so. So that's the three items.
Groovy.
Groovy.
Very groovy. That's all good news. Thank you for that report.
I want to explain that to Alexa.
She won't know what groovy is.
Well, it's good to hear, you know, a runway is important to get done quickly. So it's nice that Fan did such a great job and was efficient and even came in under budget, which I'm assuming will be a trend we'll see in the future is my hope.
We hope so. And actually, the Dibble Engineering came in under budget as well, and so it was great work on both cards.
Very good. Councilman Sishka?
Thanks, Mayor. Robin, could you explain a little bit some of the difficulties that you ran into out there?
Absolutely. So the change in soil conditions was a result of the fact that there, there are some layers of soil out there that are clay. And because of that, they tend to retain layers of water. So what we did run into a few times was literally standing water. So you could stand on the runway and do this, and the water would squish out of the cracks. So we, we had some work, some additional exploration work done to make sure that it wasn't, say, a broken water line or something else. And it was a naturally occurring event. So as a result, we did have to do some soil condition adjustment there. And then the other issue was, there's been so many layers over the runway over the years, and some of them were not consistent. Say, along the edges, there was less consistency. So what we ran into is some places where we thought there would be pavement, and when you get down there, there'd be, it would be dirt. So we had additional material that had to be added. And that was because it was so spotty, you couldn't predict that using traditional destructive testing or any type of sampling in advance. So that's why we had the change in conditions.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Mayor Protem?
I'd just like to make a comment and thank Fan Contracting, what a great job they did.
They did.
So four weeks under budget with all the issues they, they ran into. So pretty amazing. So, and congratulations also to Mr. Fan.
He definitely married up there.
Yeah.
All right.
I should say to Mrs. Fan as well.
Any other questions, comments? Entertain three different motions.
Mayor, I move to approve a change order request.
Second.
Motion second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Mayor, I move to approve amendment A1, city contract number 2018-242A1.
Second.
Motion second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Mayor, I move to, move to accept Arizona Department of Transportation grant number
Second.
Motion second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you for that. Mayor Protem and I were able to attend the inauguration yesterday. It was a great event. Lots of great people there that we were able to run into. Were able to go to President Senator Karen Fan's new office, which was great. We're very proud of Senator Fan and her accomplishments down there at the Senate. I would like to leave you with a quote from our governor from his speech yesterday. Civility and collaboration will carry us forward. This meeting is adjourned.